City of Northland, Channel 8, keeping you informed of events in your community.
Okay, I'd like to call the regular city council meeting to order. Joanna, would you call the girl, please?
Mayor Downing?
Here.
Mayor Protem, Carol Dodge?
Here.
Councilmember Snatzinger?
Here.
Councilmember Molika?
Here.
Councilmember Wayne Dodge will be absent. Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Carrico?
Here.
Councilmember Whitman?
Here.
Councilmember Winnicky?
Here.
Thank you. Would you stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Does the council have any additions or deletions from the agenda? Okay, seeing then we have two proclamations, and I'll just go down in front. The first one, okay, we have Joel Samansky and Alan Duckworth. Come on up. Thank you for coming. Camera over here. Thank you for coming. This is in a celebration of Arbor Day. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than 1 million trees in the state of Nebraska. And whereas 2015 is the 143rd anniversary of the holiday, Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas the city of Northland has been designated a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are renewable resources, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and adding beauty to our communities. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, I rejoice, Downing, mayor of the city of Northland, Colorado, hereby proclaim April 17th, 2015 as Arbor Day in the city of Northland, and urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day, to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, and to plant trees to gladden the hearts and promote the well-being of this and future generations. Dated to Northland, Colorado, this 27th day of April, 2015. Thank you. Congratulations.
All your support of the city manager and Amanda, thank you so much for all the support that we receive.
Thank you.
A pleasure to work here.
Thanks for coming. Now we have, um, the citywide prayer proclamation. And is Pastor Brad Richardson here? And also Ruth Davis? Ruth, you come every year.
I brought my pastor, and he was invited this time.
Yeah, I'm so glad you brought him. It's so good to see you. Hello Pastor, how are you? Thanks for coming.
I'm good. I'm getting tired trying to keep up with her.
I know, I know. I agree. Let me read this to you, please. Whereas a national day of prayer was first proclaimed by the Continental Congress in 1775, and the current United States Congress by public law 100-307, as amended, has called on our nation to reaffirm the role of prayer and to respect the freedom of religion by recognizing each year a national day of prayer. And whereas in 1789, George Washington proclaimed, "It is the duty of all nations to acknowledge the providence of Almighty God, to obey His will, to be grateful for His benefits, and to humbly implore His protection and favor." And prayer remains an important part of our national culture. And whereas we pray for the safety of our troops as they carry out dangerous missions with courage and compassion, and we come together to seek God's continued guidance, protection, and blessings for our great land. And whereas we pray for the protection of innocent lives and for the expansion of peace and liberty throughout the world. And whereas through prayer, our faith is strengthened, our hearts are humbled, and our lives are transformed. May our hearts have the humility to trust in the goodness of God's plans. Now therefore, I rejoice, Downing, mayor of the city of Northland, Colorado, do hereby proclaim Thursday, May 7th, 2015, as citywide day of prayer. And encourage every citizen of this community to give thanks, each according to his or her own faith, for the freedoms and blessings we have received and for continued guidance and protection. I urge all citizens to join in observing this day, dated at Northland, Colorado, this 27th day of April, 2015. Congratulations. Thank you.
It's an honor and a privilege to pray for you and be part of this great city. And this young lady here has offered countless prayers on your behalf of the city of Northland, so.
We need them.
Thank you. Thank you so much for coming. Thank you. Thanks Ruth. Next on the agenda is, um, public invited to be heard, five minutes per speaker. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to?
Did you skip sex?
I just did.
Tree City and Youth Commission?
Oh, you're, I'm sorry, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, next we have, I'm sorry about that, presentations, Tree City USA. Do you have a presentation? Okay.
Because of Northland's commitment to their urban forestry program and their trees, the Colorado State Forest Service is pleased to recognize Northland as a Tree City USA community. Tree City USA, a program sponsored by the Arbor Day Foundation, provides, among other things, national recognition for greater communities. The requirements to be a Tree City USA community are a tree board or department, a tree care ordinance, a community forestry program, and an Arbor Day proclamation and observation. People love trees, and when their community earns the Tree City USA designation is a sign that their elected officials and city employees recognize the importance of trees in people's lives. Gaining and retaining Tree City USA recognition is an award to the tree workers, managers, volunteers, tree board members, and others who work on behalf of the better care for a community's trees and is a source of pride. Nationwide, there are 3,400 Tree City USAs, and the Colorado State Forest Service is proud of Colorado's Tree City communities and is pleased to congratulate the city of Northland in its 25th year as a recognized Colorado Tree City. This achievement celebrates and recognizes your commitment to the city of Northland's urban forestry programs. And for this, Arbor Day Foundation, uh, has given the city a new new Arbor Day flag.
Very nice.
Twenty-five.
Thank you. Can you turn it around so the camera can see it also? That's great. Thank you.
Some other goodies here, so on behalf of the Colorado State Forest Service, we'd like to present, uh, city of Northland with their 25th Tree City USA award.
Thank you so much.
I would just like to say, on behalf of the Parks and Recreation Division, a thank you to council, Parks Board, and the Colorado State Forest Service for all of your support.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you. Wow, 25 years, that's amazing.
Trees.
Next is Youth Commission quarterly report. Please introduce yourself for everyone.
Hi, I'm Savannah Van Dyne. I'm the vice president for Youth Commission.
I'm Alan Danici, and I'm the secretary. And we're going to give our second quarter update, that way you guys know what we've been doing.
Great.
So we're planning an event called Mayor on the Move, which is gonna, the idea or goal is to have citizens, especially the kids, connect to like the city government. So we're taking the already existing program and making it the kids' or youth edition, so they get a chance to say what they want to say.
That's good. I'm looking forward to that.
And then on May 8th, we're having our second annual Dodgeball tournament, May Mayhem. And the funds last year went to the Ralston House, and this year we're going to donate our funds to make care packages for our troops overseas. We're gonna have an, well, we're planning to have an exhibition game between the different branches of the military. We don't currently have enough participants, so if you or anybody you know has served in the military or is serving in the military, you'd appreciate passing on the information, because we'd really like to have that.
Okay, and can we put something in the connection about there from the Youth Commission? Okay.
Um, and then the Highland Canal cleanup, um, we participated in it as a group, as the Youth Commission, and we thought that we'd comment on the weirdest thing that we found. Yeah. We found a full, unopened, family-sized bag of Doritos. I can't possibly imagine where anybody would throw that.
That's worth that one.
And Joe looked everywhere for it.
Okay, and then, um, this summer or fall, we're going to be a part of the Relay for Life, so we're gonna have our own team and walk around. And we're gonna fundraise on June 16th at Firehouse, so if anyone would like to have a sandwich. And then, um, our last point is that we have gained five new members, so that's a great plus, because now we have more people that have an input to say.
That's wonderful. That's wonderful. Thank you for coming. Is there any questions? Do you have anything else? I thought you said it was your last point.
Yeah, it was.
Is there any questions or comments?
I had one.
Yes, yes.
Well, wow, you guys are really busy and doing a lot of great things, so that's fantastic. I was just wondering if maybe you might want to reach out to the police departments and the fire departments, since there's usually a lot of military in some of those organizations, and just put a word out about your Dodgeball, maybe? So it was just a thought, but excellent work you guys are doing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What, uh, what day is your fundraiser again?
June 16th.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming. I look forward to seeing you again soon. Okay. Next we have public invited to be heard, five minutes per speaker. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to council for up to five minutes? Seeing no one approach, we'll move on the agenda to the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Please open the vote. Vote is open. Please vote.
I'll close that vote, and the consent agenda passes unanimously.
Next is, next ordinance is first reading.
The first one is CB 1851, a bill for an ordinance approving a water and wastewater rate change for the city of Northland.
Move to approve. Second.
Uh, this is a, uh, what would be the fifth of the planned five-year rate increases that were recommended by the Red Oak Consulting Firm back in, um, 2008, 2009 period. Um, the rate increases are being primarily driven by, uh, a number of fairly large capital improvement projects that we have planned over the next 10 years. And, um, so, uh, that's, uh, that's why these increases have been needed. Um, so.
Okay, discussion?
Unfortunately, it's just something we have to do to pay for all the improvements, so.
Right.
I don't think there's a big choice.
Okay, please open the vote. The vote is open. Please vote.
I'll close that vote, and CB 1851 on first reading passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next is CB 1852.
A bill for an ordinance amending the Northland Noise Control Ordinance addressing construction noise.
Move to approve. Second.
This ordinance would change the time of day during which noise-producing construction activities can occur in the city. Presently, the ordinance allows those activities to run until 10 o'clock at night, and this ordinance would change that so that 7 o'clock would be the, um, the period at which those activities would have to cease.
Thank you. Discussion? Hearing done, please open the vote. Vote is open. Please vote.
I'll close that vote, and CB 1852 on first reading passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next is CB 1853.
A bill for an ordinance repealing and reenacting Article 9 of Chapter 16 of the Northland Municipal Code regarding the designations of historical structures and sites within the city of Northland.
Move to approve. Second. John?
I think I've drawn this one. The purpose of this ordinance is to repeal and reenact the city's municipal code article regarding historic preservation. Uh, the intent is to seek certified local government status. And so this ordinance, um, has more specifics regarding the designation of structures and sites. Also, the composition of the commission is more specifically, um, more specifically tracks the guidelines, um, to achieve CLG status. So assuming this is adopted, this would be sent on to History Colorado to attempt to get the CLG designation.
Thank you. Discussion?
Mayor?
Yes?
I'd like to offer friendly, uh, small friendly amendment on page four, subsection H. Right now, it says the city council shall also point to, uh, alternative, alternate commissioners. And I'd like to suggest that it be may appoint, because we have some difficulty now and then in filling out the number of commissioners that we have. And there is no may, and, I mean, there is no shall in front of the appointment of the regular commissioners, and as such, there should not be a shall in front of the alternates.
So, there's not a shall in front of the regular commissioners?
No, it says that the commission will have seven members.
Right.
Right, right.
All right. And if, we want to have alternates. So this allows us to have alternate, but does not require alternates if we have vacancies in the regulars.
Right, okay. Seems very reasonable to me. What about the rest of the boards? How, what does it read as far as alternates go?
I'm not, uh, I'm not sure, Mayor. We'd have to look at that.
Okay, or maybe Cory has it.
I could certainly look at, uh, Planning Commission and Parks Board quickly.
So I think I might be confused. Can I just get clarification? So on page three in B, it says the commission shall consist of seven commissioners? So I guess I'm confused. What are we changing?
Is it just the alternates?
The alternates.
Just the alternates he's referring to.
Because right now you only have, I think, five or six.
We have six.
Six right now.
One, one just resigned.
Right, so you have six now.
Right. And we have two people that are interested right now.
Yeah, I'm not quite sure what we heard. I mean, if it gives us the option, I don't think it heard anything. I mean, if it just says you have the option of having alternates made in a shall. I'm not quite sure if there's anything that harms.
I don't think it does either.
The first one I found, board of adjustment, has a shall. I'm going on to, uh, the Parks Board to see if I can find that one, but, either way.
So it seems to me like we should be consistent with the rest of the boards, so.
And I just don't know. Uh, it would take a little time to go through all the ordinances to see which ones. I'm happy to do that.
No, no, that's okay. I was just kind of curious what.
Do we have alternates on those other boards?
On some of the boards, I think, or maybe all of them.
Not on Parks and Rec. We don't even have a full board now, so we don't have alternates.
Okay.
Cory, from a legal standpoint, does that, does the word shall, does that require us, or, I mean? It certainly does. Um, I mean, in that sense, you would, you would always be searching to make sure that you have the alternates that are required by the ordinance, whereas may, you wouldn't be any, under any obligation to do so.
So it actually gives the board or the commission some relief as far as the search product goes, or, you know?
I think really it gives the council the ability to assure that there is a full board in the event that someone is, is not present.
With the word shall or may?
Shall.
Shall, okay. I think we should leave it the way it is then.
That's fine.
Yes. Okay, all right, thanks for the idea anyway, Gene. Okay, any other discussion? Hearing done, please open the vote. The vote is open. Please vote.
I'll close that vote, and CB 1853 on first reading passes unanimously. And I would like to note for the record that the public hearings on CB 1851, 1852, and 1853 will be held on May 11th, 2015, here in City Hall Council Chambers.
Thank you. Next is resolutions. First one is CR 53.
A resolution approving a professional services agreement between the city of Northland and Ramey Environmental Compliance Incorporated for 2015 lift station maintenance services.
Move to approve. Second.
This contract would provide for the city to contract out the maintenance on our eight small lift stations. Up to now, our own in-house staff has been providing that maintenance, but with additional maintenance demands on the wastewater treatment plant, it's becoming more and more difficult for them to keep up. So, uh, we want to try this on a trial basis to see what kind of, uh, experience we have. So, um, and this is, would be a contract to Ramey Environmental Compliance, Inc. in the amount of $30,906.
Thank you. Discussion? Hearing done, please open the vote. The vote is open. Please vote.
I'll close that vote, and CR 53 passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next is CR 54.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to issue a purchase order to Superior Sales Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $41,961 for the purchase of three submersible pumps for the Fox Run Lift Station.
Move to approve. Second. John?
The Fox Run Lift Station was constructed in 1996, and the pumps that are in there were there originally, and so they've got 19 years on. They run pretty much constantly, so, uh, we're proposing to replace those. There are three 30 horsepower pumps, and, um, as was stated, the low bid was Superior Sales with a total bid of $41,961.
Thank you. Discussion? I do have a question. Is, now, this lift station is over at the Stonehocker property.
Yes, that's correct.
When there's the repair or the exchange of pumps, what kind of activity is going to be over there? I mean, what, is there going to be a lot of big trucks over there? I mean, you know, is, what kind of damage is going to happen to the property?
Yeah, I'll let David respond to that.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. There won't be any damage to the property whatsoever. It'd be similar to when our electric and mechanical crews go in there and do, uh, do their normal maintenance on the lift station. They'll just pull out the pump with a little crane.
Okay, so there's not going to be a lot of trucks moving in and out?
No.
And doing all that kind of stuff? Has there been any conversation about ever moving the lift station? Because that was actually put in without the historic commission's knowledge, and that was under another city manager's watch, you know, so we didn't, can't do anything about it, but.
Yeah, a little bit about the lift station, we, there has to be a lift station there. There is an interconnect, another interconnect at that lift station we can flow directly to Thornton. But in order to get that up to lift station, uh, A, we do need to lift it. I haven't been approached to look at an alternative location.
Yeah, and we just had conversations about it, but, you know, I just wondered if there had ever been.
Not to my knowledge.
Thank you. All right. Okay, any other discussion? Please open the vote. The vote is open.
Close that vote, and CR 54 passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next is CR 55.
A resolution approving an agreement between the city of Northland and Asphalt Specialties Company Incorporated for the Garland Drive reconstruction project.
Move to approve.
Second.
Yeah, this project would reconstruct Garland Drive from Washington Street to just west of the Walmart. And in addition, we will be re, um, milling and overlaying the rest of Garland Drive to Grant Street. And it will also be installing, where necessary, concrete, curb gutter, and sidewalks.
Thank you.
And the total is, was said, was, the total is $307,240.80.
Okay, thank you. Discussion?
Yeah, I just wondered, if approved, when do we think this would start and maybe be completed? I mean, I know the weather could have a factor if, if it starts snowing again or something, but what is the timeframe for this?
Uh, pending council approval, we'll give a notice of proceed, and then we'll have to get their bonding and insurances and things like that. There'll be some coordination with Walmart to try to make sure that we get them access for their trucking and shipping while we're working on the road. Um, I would say probably four months, uh, four weeks, excuse me, three, four weeks.
Four weeks for the whole project?
No, to get going.
Oh, to get going?
Yeah, I think, I don't have the contract here in front of me, but I think there's a performance period in your contract. It might be, uh, of three or four months.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any other discussion? Yes, Kim?
Do we know why the bid prices were so different? It was over $100,000 for the other folks.
No, I don't. David, you?
I, I would just say, uh, best guess would be, uh, Asphalt Specialties bid on this last year, so they were really familiar with the project. Uh, so my guess is, uh, that would accommodate with the heated-up, uh, construction market. They wanted to work more, but I did notice $100,000 left on the table.
Yeah, that, that's a very significant difference. So it kind of jumped out at me and made me a little concerned why there was such a huge difference between the two. And I can understand 20, 30, but 100 is significant.
The bid prices are all over the place this year, and there's no real rhyme or reason to, other than, um, how busy they are. They already got, uh, work already planned for the summer. I can't, thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Thanks, David.
Please open the vote. The vote is open. Please vote.
Close that vote, and CR 55 passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next, CR 56.
A resolution approving an agreement between the city of Northland and H&amp;A Concrete Sawing Incorporated for the 2015 residential sidewalk and trail replacement program.
Move to approve. Second. John?
As this, um, says, this would be our 2015 sidewalk control replacement program where we, uh, take a look at, um, the damaged concrete on both sidewalks and on our trails and, uh, seek to repair those sections that need to be repaired. I'm going to ask David to address a change which I, which we're going to need to make on this. I'm going to ask David to address a change which we're going to need to make on this project because we just noticed something that was a discrepancy. David, do you want to address that?
Thank you, John.
Aren't we on the J&amp;T Consulting Engineering, or am I on the wrong?
No, you're on the wrong one.
Wrong, Resolution 56.
Yeah, 56.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
I was totally confused for like, wait a second.
You're not the only one tonight. I do the same thing.
Councilmembers, apologize for the little commotion there earlier, but we were just discussing this resolution tonight. It's come to my attention just recently that, I think you're aware of some of the issues we've had with CDBG. Fact of the matter is, it was, this, this funding was not applied for last year, and yet it got into the budget as an appropriation. So I'm going to suggest maybe a couple of different options for council tonight. I was just talking with Jason, there is money in the Adcot funding, plenty of money, around $600,000 to absorb this $50,000. Or we could take this, basically, $48,000 and $45,000 out of this contract.
Hmm. Go ahead.
How did that, yeah, how did that happen?
It's just, and things, never-ending saga with CDBG. I mean, we, I don't know from really, you know, how they're managing projects, how they approve projects, and I don't believe that we just got into their opera last year.
But I thought you said that it wasn't submitted as part of our package, not that?
We didn't submit, I don't believe, Brooke can, can chime in here, but I don't believe we submitted anything last year. Maybe Help for Homes.
Good evening, everyone. To answer the question, the request that we made for last year's funding, which is this year's calendar year, was for the Larson Park project. The past two years, CDBG, Adco CDBG, we've not utilized any of those funds for anything because it was basically held in abeyance for those two years. And so when we put together our request last fall, this was not included in that request.
And annually, we do receive monies from Adcot?
That's correct. It's approximately about two, it has ranged between $200,000 and $239,000. And this was, this is all tied back to the minor home repair program and the, and putting that on hold and the allocations of those funds, et cetera.
But you don't know why this wasn't included in when we put in for the fund?
I didn't, I didn't put it in with last year's package request because we got, this was one of those situations last year where they told us that we weren't going to be able to apply until early this year. And then, I believe it was in late October, early November, they said that we had three weeks to put together a package request. And quite frankly, I didn't know about, I didn't know that this was already programmed into the CIP. So we put, we came to council in a hurried manner to say we need to request funding or we're going to lose it because that's another thing that's changed recently. And so in that, we put together the Larson Park request.
If we take it out of Adcot, is it hurting any other projects now? I would suggest going that way myself, just, it's residential sidewalk and trail replacement, and it's important to the residents, so I have no problem taking it out of Adcot.
And we get reimbursed every year, too, if they're, I mean, more if it gets funded back, so. And we haven't used any of that money?
The Adcot fund, I believe, has a fund balance of around $600,000 now, so you, we could appropriate the 50 from that.
Okay. I'm fine with that, too. Any other discussion?
It's just a good investment in the community and makes it safer, so.
So do we need to have a friendly or anything to change, make that change, or?
I think so. I think you're going to have to come back with the funding piece, at least that's my understanding. I'm not sure how the dollars are appropriated. You could certainly make it as a friendly, but if we have to redo the budget later, we'll do that as well.
Okay, all right. Is that the easiest way, I mean, the cleanest way to do it?
Do both, because I'm not sure how the budget is laid out. I just don't know if it'll require any sort of amendment.
All right.
So certainly do the friendly, and then we'll figure out if we need to do the amendment later.
Thank you. So is the major?
I'll add the friendly. So I'd like to add a friendly, removing the CDBG money and taking the $48,045 from the Adcot fund.
Okay. The second?
That's in the memo, right?
Yeah, Jason just whispered in my ear that it's only the memo that specifies the source of funding, so there, you can do, you can approve it as is.
Oh, thank you, okay.
So, and maybe this is my ignorance, Mayor, can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
On this, being that we didn't ask for the CDBG funding, this 45 or 43,000, does that mean that we lost it? Because I know that it was a use it or lose it type thing, so.
Well, I think we did apply for.
Well, I know we applied for Larson, but was this money that we could have gotten if had we applied for it?
No, it's, it's, it's reverse engineering. We get a set amount every year, and last year, we requested the use of all of our funds to go toward Larson Park. We did not segregate and make two separate requests, one for Curb and Better and one for Larson.
So we didn't lose out on any CDBG funds?
No, we did not.
Right, okay.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, please open the vote. The vote is open, please vote.
I'll close out vote and CR 56 passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next is CR 57.
A resolution approving addendum number one to the professional services agreement between the City of North Glen and J&amp;T Consulting, Incorporated for civil engineering services. Move to approve.
Second.
John?
This is J&amp;T Consulting.
Yes.
We have an on-call engineering services contract with J&amp;T Consulting for water and wastewater engineering and planning services. And this year, with FastTrax, the FastTrax project, we are going to be asked to review a number of stormwater plans that RTD is going to be giving us for stormwater projects along the route. We don't have the staff to be able to review those plans, and so we're seeking an addition, an addendum to the contract with J&amp;T of $19,920 to be able, for them to be able to do this review work for us.
Discussion?
I got a question. So is it because it's going to put requirements on us to build an extra hydraulics or extra things that we need that type of review, or is it because it's just so complicated or whatnot? I'm just, I'm not so sure I understand the whole purpose of this.
Well, it's rather complicated. I'll try to explain it. You know how the tracks go around the Fox Run open space? There is, the piping underneath the tracks right now is for a small year storm. It's like maybe for a 20-year storm. I'm not sure the exact number. When FastTrax, FastTrax took over the corridor, tried to build their line, what they want to do is put 100-year, 100-year, be able to pass 100-year storm there. What that causes is the inadvertent detention that happens upstream, to either be moved downstream or modified, so it becomes permanent detention upstream. So what we're trying to do as staff, we're trying to get RTD to follow the guidelines that were set up in the original EIS to keep the inadvertent detention in more of a permanent nature, so to keep it out of the Fox Run open space. That changes the hydrology altogether on the west side of the tracks where you really need a very technically sophisticated drainage engineer to work with urban drainage, make sure we're okay there, so it doesn't affect any of the property owners. And in fact, at some point in time, there may be some help that they're going to have to negotiate with property owners for search for easements to piping from one side to the north side. I think, I'm not sure where the property is, but there's two small inadvertent detentions there, and they have to be connected. So there'll be a small easement required, but we're trying to keep them out of Fox Run open space to the west of the tracks. So that's what this study is about.
David, with, with RTD being the one that wants to be able to pass this 100-year storm, are we looking at them kicking in any of this money for this review? Because it doesn't sound like this would be happening without their, this project that they're wanting to get done.
This is really a QA QC for the city's behalf. They have a design consultant that's working on this and as well as urban drainage is our partner in this, too. So there's, there's quite a few eyes on this. And JT Consulting is basically our checks and balance, just to make sure that our best interests as a city are certainly felt in the design when it finally becomes the fruition, what's going to get installed.
Will we be able to add this cost to our matching funds as part of our matching?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Thanks, David.
Please open the vote. The vote is open, please vote.
I'll close out vote and CR 57 passes unanimously.
Next is CR 58.
A resolution finding that the comprehensive sign plan provisions of the North Glen Municipal Code are required to apply to the properties generally located at 120th Avenue and Grant Street.
Move to approve.
Second. John?
Okay, this item has, is for the council to authorize the use of the comprehensive sign plan for the hospital project because under Section 2116, Part A6 of the, of the zoning code, or the subdivision code, this kind of request requires city council action so that then we can go back to the planning commission for the comprehensive sign plan.
Discussion?
I just had a question. Does anybody know what the setback is from 120th to the sign, to the, you know, the monument part?
So would it be right where the sign is now?
The answer is yes, it would more or less be right in the exact same location. And it's measured from the face of curb is the setback, and one of the, one of the provisions of the comprehensive sign plan is there's flexibility with that. And what we've, part of what the consideration for the, for the particular sign is that it can't be in within the vision triangle or create a safety condition.
Okay. So what's the setback from the curb?
Off the top of my head, under the comprehensive sign plan, I can't remember. I think it has to do with the speed. It has to do with the type of arterial, if it's an arterial or residential collector. But from what I understand is that it does, the proposed location is in compliance.
Okay. I was just curious if the top part of the sign, because it extends out, if it extends out over the road at all?
It does not.
It does not, okay. Okay, it's back far enough, I see. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, please open the vote. The vote is open, please vote.
I'll close out vote and CR 58 passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next is CR 59.
A resolution approving the Grant Street Professional Park subdivision improvement agreement between the City of North Glen and DR North Glen Development, LLC.
Move to approve.
Second.
John?
This subdivision improvement agreement is a necessary part of the process to facilitate the development of the hospital. And also, the resolution provides a conditional statement that the approval of the resolution is subject to approval of the subdivision and final development plan by the planning commission, and that will be hearing that on May 5th.
Thank you. Discussion? Hearing none, please open the vote. The vote is open, please vote.
I'll close out vote and CR 59 passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next, we'll move to communications. Oh, I don't want the van. There we go, okay. After all this, sorry about that. CR 60, I'm sorry.
Move to approve.
Second. After all the discussion about the van, and I skip right over.
That's right. And there's, and there's more discussion about the van.
I don't.
Yeah, this is the gift that keeps on giving. The, when we, when the city issued the purchase order to O'Meara Ford, O'Meara had, I think, full, they believed that they would be able, would be able to find a van at that price. However, they found out that those vans, which are the 2015 model years, are no, were no longer being made. They looked around to find another van that would meet our specifications. They ultimately did come to, come to a van that's close to our specifications, about as close as we're going to get. However, it does have some additional features on it which would increase the price by an additional $2,754, and that includes cloth seats rather than vinyl, the shipping and transfer costs are included as well, a backup camera, and then what's referred to as EcoBoost technology. So that would then, in order for us to get this van, we have to ask the council for an additional $2,754.
Mayor?
Yes.
So the issue I have, and I'm, I'm voting yes because I want the stinking van, but the issue I have, if we go back to June 9th of 2014, we, and we add up this amount, we are actually paying $4,604.15 more for this van, not $2,700. So again, we're being stuck to it by Barbies, and it just irritates the heck out of me. And my other point I want to just make is in the future, it would be great if staff and or John, if you bring in the city attorney a little bit sooner to try to address this. If he would have known about it sooner, he could have been on it and pushing it, and we might not be stuck for $4,600 bucks. So I'm a little disappointed in that sense, but I just want the van.
I agree with that, and Cory and I have talked about that for future reference.
Okay, discussion? Any other discussion?
After all that, did you say there was a delivery date? Did I miss that? Is there a delivery date? You know, somebody's going to ask that.
Yeah, the, the van actually exists. It was in Nevada, and it's been, actually, O'Meara bought the van for us because the vendor in Nevada would not hold it till tomorrow, basically. So I think we'd be able to take care, take delivery on it within the next couple of days. Is that right?
We were told between one to two weeks for delivery. Once we confirm with them tomorrow that approval has been granted for the purchase, we should be able to get a delivery date from them quickly. We do really appreciate O'Meara working with us. We did try to ask them if they would negotiate that price down to what we had approved. They were not able to do that, but he did come down from the price that they were originally offering and was willing, he, he's the one who called us back and said, "We're going to go ahead and purchase this vehicle for you so that it's still here on Monday when, when you can get spending authority." So we appreciate O'Meara working with us on that.
So we've had a good experience with O'Meara thus far?
Yes, we have.
So is this something that we'll continue to do to at least give them the opportunity?
Well, the council has said that the policy will follow their policy.
So it's almost like the van needs a ribbon cutting at O'Meara Ford.
And here, I tried to skip right over it, too, you know, so. I know. Okay, please open the vote.
The vote is open, please vote. I'll close out vote and CR 60 passes unanimously.
Now we'll go to communications. Okay, Jean?
Nothing tonight.
Okay.
I just wanted to thank everyone for coming out to the award meeting last Wednesday night, and everybody enjoyed pizza. We had great conversation, so I really appreciate that, and I appreciate staff for coming out. And I also just wanted to thank the seniors for welcoming me at their lunch on Friday. We were at Longhorn, and it was packed, and it was a great afternoon. Thank you.
Well, I wanted to say thank you to the PE for the shredding event. It looked like there were lots and lots of volunteers there and people there, and very successful event. I got rid of a lot of stuff, so that was good. So, thank you. Also, I know Joyce and I both attended the Malle Elementary 50 Years Celebration, and that was wonderful. And I just have to tell you, I went into the music room, and I was so excited about what I learned in the music room. They're really incorporating a lot of the STEM type of philosophy with science and language and math into the music room, which was really fascinating, the way they did it and how, you know, everything they integrated. And so I was just really, kudos to, to Jean is the lady's name, our music teacher at Malle Elementary. She, she really impressed, impressed me greatly. Also, went to the backpacks to briefcase event, and that was, that was a fun event to go to. I participated in the part with, with the etiquette at the luncheon. I learned a few things, of course, which, sad to say, but it was, it was good. It was good, and I think the kids got a lot out of the whole day program, so thank you for the opportunity. And I just wanted to mention, if anybody needs any CPR classes or anything like that, North Metro Fire Rescue District is putting on a bunch of CPR classes coming up in the near future, which are listed on their website. So I think that's what I have. Thanks.
And I just want to thank the residents in Ward 1, came out to our award meeting. It was very good, a lot of questions and answers, and staff really handled it well. Brooke, you went above and beyond because you were very bombarded with questions, but it was really good. It was a good war meeting, so thanks to everybody, did a great job.
That's it? I've got a couple of things. I thought Les, you would mention this, but Merry Chancho dinner?
Oh, yes, how could I forget that?
I don't know. Do you want to mention it?
No, go ahead.
Okay, Les and myself and Carol and Wayne all attended the Merry Chancho dinner, and Dr. Strickland, who is a North Glen resident, was actually nominated for an award. So that was very exciting. He and his wife were there. We were very pleased to see that. I can't imagine all the things he has done in the community. It was just amazing. Another brief thing, we went to the Adcot breakfast, John and I did, and Mayor Hogan just announced that the Gaylord Project actually had a groundbreaking the other day. So that was really good. I think there's a lot of other obstacles they have to overcome, but at least it has started. And then also, at the Dr. Cog Awards Dinner, Karen Stewart received, and she's the executive director for our TMO here in the north area. She's also the former mayor of Brimfield. But anyway, she received the distinguished merit award for all the things that she's been doing with us, so that, for transportation, so that was good. Let's see, what else? Went to see thoroughly modern milli the other day, yesterday. Very good. The kids just do such a great job, you know, they just, it was wonderful. We had a good time. And then the last but not least, we're holding a reception for the new CDOT director this coming Thursday, so everyone is invited to come. It's from 4:00 to 5:00 over at ACD. And it'll be a meet and greet. It'll be from 4:00 to 5:00. So if anybody's interested in coming, I think, he's very nice, and he has a lot of background and experience. You might be. background and experience you might be interested in.
What's his, is he Shay?
Shaleen.
He spoke at our CML luncheon the other day.
Right.
And he was awesome.
He's been traveling.
Really nice guy.
Isn't he? He's very nice.
Very knowledgeable.
Yes, yes.
Although he made fun of Pennsylvania's terrible roads. It's like, is anybody here from Pennsylvania?
Yeah.
Yes? He said, "You've got like the worst roads," so.
He talks about his wife a lot, too, you know?
He did, yeah. No, he was really, he had a really good way of speaking, I enjoyed it.
Yes, I know. Thank you. All right. John?
No.
Nothing?
No.
All right.
I just wanna second what Marcy said, we had a great ward meeting, and some good pizza from Perry's Pizza, so I encourage everyone to go check that out, they're good pizza. I didn't hear one bad thing about it, so. I also had the opportunity to go to Ward 1's meeting, and great attendance. Carol, Councilman Dodge, I thought it was great, so you guys did a good job, and I think-
It's because we don't have them that often, that's why.
So, yeah, it was, it was, it was good. Both of them were great.
Okay.
Jean and I would like to thank everyone who came out to our award meeting last week as well. I think this is the first time in six years that we weren't yelled at, so thank you very much for coming and not yelling at us. We appreciated that, but no, we had a pretty good turnout. Some concerns that were raised, a lot, several folks talked to us about here on the street, and how unkept it looks, and that it's very unattractive, so had some folks complain about that, and, but thanks to everybody who came out for us. And that's it.
Okay. Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Yes, I think it was the week before last, Brooke and I were advised of a, an issue that we wanted to bring to the attention of the council, and involves the sound wall project on I-25. Brooke, you wanna?
Good thing, this is something that came from the Ward 4 meeting, didn't it? Or 3?
No, this was something we were just in, being anticipatory.
Uh, okay.
So, just, just, that kinda sounded like a dark doom and gloom there.
It did.
But the current noise wall project is well underway, and the, and the current wood pickets are gonna be replaced on schedule this summer, so that's not what I'm here to talk about tonight. It's actually the portion of the noise wall between 112th and 120th, on the west side of I-25, that was excluded from this current ear scope of work that's being done. We met with CDOT staff earlier this month, and they held an open house on May 9th, or, excuse me, April 9th, where we found out that the design for the new wall along that section is gonna require taking fee property from the property owners. And on the south portion, it's approximately five feet, and as it moves north, it gets to, it slowly transitions over to about 15 feet. So, when we first heard about this, the information that we've been given is very preliminary design work, it's not high-level detail, and I unfortunately was unable to attend that particular meeting, and have since followed up with the resident engineer working on the project. And what I've come to understand is that they are still in the preliminary design, and they hope to have the final design for the wall done late spring, early summer. And with that, as I understand, the goal is to try to shift it as close to, away from the homes as possible. And let me just say, at this point, that the reason for the wall having to move out is because they have to get past the bus drop lane at 120th. So, right now, the current HOV lanes just go like this, straight down. Well, they have to widen to get around them, to extend the HOV lanes up north, and that's what this noise wall project's part of. So with that, they are going to formalize and finalize the design, and then they are gonna have right-of-way specialists, technicians, that are gonna go out and meet with every single property owner about what is ultimately gonna be required, if, if anything, from their property, probably in the late summer. And then, they will be working with each property owner on an individual basis. The goal for the project is to have the right-of-way acquired and the project out to bid by November, and the construction to probably start in spring or next year. Also, I have the point of contact, which I'll do for the, for the, for the citizens watching, is, is the CDOT right-of-way specialist, right-of-way manager, Bob Grude, and his number is 970-350-2152. That's 970-350-2152. And he can answer any questions of anyone's that has about that.
I just wondered, do you know how many people might, residents might be impacted by this?
It's about 40-plus.
About 40-plus?
Yep. It's essentially where you see the wood picket fence now, from the industrial area all the way up toward the cracker row.
Marcy?
So, I understand that they're gonna meet with them individually, but I have some concern that I would like it to be seen, and that's fine that they wanna do that, but personally, I'd like to see it as a collective meeting for the residents. I really wanna be sure that a consistent message is being said to them, especially since this is like spring-on-you surprise. So that would be my request for residents in that ward, that there be a scheduled meeting that everyone in that area is notified, and importantly, Kyle and I.
And I'd be happy to pass, convey that back to the-
Perfect. Thank you.
And two things, I have, just one question, then one comment. I've been told that they're going, that the residents will be compensated for any land that's gonna be-
That's correct.
Taken, so, so that it's not just gonna be taken from them. And then, secondly, you kinda made this motion, so will, will land be taken on the other side of the highway as well?
They're actually taking a portion of, of the city's property, and we're gonna need to relocate the Parks and Rec sign, but it's literally a sliver of, of the land.
That's one way to get rid of that sign.
And one of the things that we've talked with them about, with this project, is we've mentioned that we're getting ready to start a master planning process, and so it's likely that we're not gonna replace it in the same or general location. And so, we're gonna be negotiating with them to secure a price for, for one-to-one replacement value, and then try to secure a permit for the permanent location, once we know what it is. And as you, as you all well know, when we, last time dealt with this issue, we ran into some road bumps, pun intended, and this time, we wanna make sure that doesn't happen.
Kim?
So, why are they just now figuring out that they need to do this? I mean, why, why didn't they figure this out to begin with? Is my first question. And I have a couple more.
I have, I have a strong suspicion that they knew this to begin with, and they, and that's the reason why that portion of the wall was not part of the first phase, because they knew they were gonna have to acquire right-of-way. I can tell you that it wasn't until my staff brought back the aerial image, that I knew that this was, this was gonna be an issue for the project.
Okay. What is the city's cost going to be?
Zero.
For sure?
We're not, there's no ask on this.
Okay. So we're not gonna put the bill for this?
To that point, one of the things that has been going back and forth, because this is, this is what CDOT calls Phase 3, and it's from 120th up as far north as they can go right now, which has gone from Highway 7 to 136 to, it's varied. But between Region 1 and Region 4, Region 1's doing the current project, Region 4's doing the next phase, they have been moving dollars around in order to ensure that the noise walls are put in.
Okay. And then, do we know what impact is going to be to the city for the reduced property